Mayor Purchin, give me one minute here, please.
I'm ready to go here.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mayor Short will be a few minutes late this evening, so I'm gonna kinda get us started, uh, while he's en route to our meeting tonight. Got it? Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Uh, so again, I'm gonna take a few minutes and leave the invocation, and then Trudy will lead us in the pleasure of it. Dear Heavenly Father, I would thank you for today, and I would thank you for allowing us to gather this evening, to, uh, to meet and make a decision regarding the future of our community, and, uh, to the direction that we'll be going. Lord, I thank you for, um, I thank you for this community, I thank you for, uh, the relationships within it. Uh, I thank you for, um, new residents, and not so new residents, that, uh, that, um, that live here. I thank you for, uh, the legacy of the ones that have led, uh, led us to this point. And, Lord, I just pray for the, uh, our civic leaders, both locally and nationally, as they, uh, continue to guide our, our country through turbulent times. Lord, I thank you for our first responders, uh, police, fire, and ambulance. I pray for their safety, um, as they, uh, work to protect us. And, Lord, I just lift up the, uh, the families of McLennan Chisholm, and Rockwall, and, and his families all over this country. And I thank you again for the opportunity to, to serve in this manner, in Jesus' name, oh, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, and the flag of the region city, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay. Item number three, uh, as with, um, our typical, um, meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect, uh, for tonight's meeting. At this point in our meeting, I'd like to call, uh, Ms. Mindy Lovell up to the front. This weekend, or this week, we are actually celebrating Constitution Week, so, um, we're going to share a proclamation.
So, we're being this, recognizing that it's our Constitution Week, and we're going, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, body, uh, bodies, and bodies, the principle of government, and the public, dedicated to rule, and whereas September 17th, Monday, was a two hundred and thirty by the University of the Friends of the Constitution of the United States of America, by the Constitution, Constitution of the Constitution. Whereas it is standing in front of the official recognition, biggest man, biggest accomplishment, and its memorial celebration. Names of great throughout celebrations, given the memory of the day. And where that's public, on nine fifteen, during the tradition of the proclamation, each year by the President of the United States of America, resonates September 17th, through November 1st, as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, they leave this all behind, make the office, make the town, the city, and the children. Do you hear that between, uh, the, uh, September 17th, through September 23rd, as Constitution? And others wishing to refund that years, as a foundation of the Constitution, held in the seventeen years, so our vision, protecting the humans, humanity, for us, through this government, and all of it.
It's such a powerful communication, and, uh, one of the, uh, the, uh, the relations that keeps them safe, and they start it, and we can have a competition, as I said, and it was very, uh, exciting, and real. So, always, they look at it, so kind of, you know, they're paying for, certainly, for some.
Thank you again, Mindy. Um, so at this time, I will open up, um, citizen comments. Did we have any submissions for this evening? Oh, gotcha. Um, I just ask, at this point in time, that we hold tax rate comments until the public hearing. And Shelley, did you receive any emails regarding citizen comments, or no? Okay, so no, no emails for comments. Uh, so we have, uh, just one this evening, uh, Mr. Steinhagen.
Yes, good evening. Robert Steinhagen, 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. I wanted to, uh, make, uh, I didn't know if the city was aware that a gentleman who has meant a lot to the community, even though he is not a citizen of McLennan Chisholm, uh, Steve Allen, uh, past way. And, uh, he was, uh, the gentleman who was responsible for a massive fireworks display that, uh, so many in our community enjoyed. And I would hope and ask that the city, um, create a proclamation, uh, respecting and honoring his sacrifice, because he spent a lot of his own money, a lot of his own time to do that. And I would just simply ask that you would consider, um, honoring him, uh, his family, I should say, uh, with that, uh, honor. I wanted to, uh, talk about two things. One is transparency in government. Obviously, I've said this at the last city council meeting, and, and I was, I was shocked that the budget for the fire station was not released in advance. And it's not, when you have a budget that's not releasing information that's critical, obviously, the Attorney General is involved in this now. Um, I've alr-, I've already won, the Attorney General has already ruled in my favor, uh, as far as open and disclosing public information that the city has been withholding from me. Uh, we're in the middle of another one, where the city, where the Attorney General is making a decision, and, uh, where I continue to argue discussion and deliberation should, should occur outside in an open session. Um, I, Mrs. Westner, uh, you had, uh, posted something on social media that, uh, you were at first concerned about the $4.2 million price tag of the, of the fire department. But if I'm summarizing this correctly, you, you've seen the real cost, and you're satisfied that that's the correct number. I'm, I'm not miss, misspeaking, am I? Not misstating your, your, your post? That, okay, if I am, please correct me, is what I'm saying. What's that? What is it? Okay. Well, the budget that was approved, you said, what you wrote was, you now understand it, and you were, you support the budget for the fire station. That's what you had written in summer, I'm, I'm summarizing. You did not? Right, you, you guys don't have discussions, so it doesn't, uh, I'm not real sure why you're concerned, but anyway, my point is, uh, that's great that, that you, you agree with the, the cost, but the problem is, you, we still don't know what these costs are. Nothing has been, nothing has been deliberated in, in an open session, as required by law. And so, if, if, if there is reason for the, the price tag that you've basically given to the AGCM, I think is the company, um, you've basically given them a, a blank check, help us understand why. What, what is, why, why is $4.2 million, and I believe that's the price tag of the, of the fire station? If I'm wrong, then, then correct, then I'll, I'll stand corrected. Finally, half, half of the, all call, fire calls go outside the city limits of McLennan Chisholm to people who contribute absolutely nothing to their fire safety. The county provides $77,500 to provide fire service to the unincorporated area of the fire district. Our total fire, uh, the cost of the, of the budget for fire is $761,000. And, and so, basically, I have been saying time and again that we need to find a way to get those who are in the unincorporated area to start contributing to their fire safety. To say that that $77,000, $77,500 equates, thank you, equates to what citizens are paying is outrageous, is outrageous. There's no, uh, $77,500 doesn't even start to, uh, to, to pay that. What I would recommend is that you can still fulfill your obligation to that fire service contract by responding to fire calls only. You do not need to give the same level of service that the citizens, that the taxpayers of McLennan Chisholm are paying, to, to those who pay no, who contribute nothing to their fire safety. So I would ask that you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steinhagen. Okay. So if we don't have any other submissions for citizen comments, I will, at this time, close citizen comments. Item number six point one, uh, consider approval of September 8th, 2020 council minutes. I believe, Shelley, please help me on this. Was there one correction made to the minutes regarding the fire station budget? Is that updated in? Okay, thank you. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as stated for September 8th, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the September 8th, 2020 city council minutes, as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions at all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous approval of the minutes as stated for September 8th, 2020. Moving on to item number seven, dot one, uh, received presentation by RCH Water Supply regarding, uh, the recent water boil notice and other water supply related matters. Um, and I believe Jackie and Steve are here on behalf of RCH.
Had some trying times here in, in the month of August, and, uh, we're taking all these concerns very seriously, and we have, it's been on the drawing board, we have a new 12-inch line proposed, and the engineering, uh, plans have already been developed for it. It goes from Pullen Road down to, uh, Edwards Road, back from Pullen Road to Ed-, uh, to League Road up to Edwards Road. And this is a new 12-inch line that's gonna be, and it would have been online this year, but the pandemic, uh, slowed a lot of things down for us. And, uh, the plans, like I say, the plans have been completed, and we have the plans that are gonna go from, that are being drawn up now, that are going from Edwards Road to 548 over to, uh, High Point Lake Estates. We also have a, a, a storage facility acquired at the corner of League Road and Edwards Road. And we're ha-, we're having the engineering drawings for a storage facility there as I speak. And, uh, we lack 13 easements, getting all of the easements for our new water line. And these, we hired a company about two weeks ago that is working on requiring the last 13 easements that we, we need to complete the easement process. And talking a little bit about what our safety concerns are on our water. We take six samples and send them to North Texas every month. And since when we had the boil notice, we increased that to eight. We take it, take samples from eight different locations on our water line and send them to North Texas, and they analyze them. All, all of our water test came back good. We did not have any problem with the quality of water. We check our chlorine samples daily, and, uh, we have to maintain a certain level of chlorine in our water system. And like I say, this is tested daily. And another update that we've, we've got started in it, and it is a new website that will have the ability to, if you subscribe to the website, it'll have the ability to tell you whenever there is an emergency situation that does arrive, or anything like that. We have it, we have a, a meeting with a, uh, new website com- company this coming Thursday. And, uh, but like I say, we're, uh, advancing with our, uh, improvements, and a lot of them had already been online if we hadn't had the pandemic or the Chinese virus. I have two board members here tonight, Steve Hatfield and Gary Lovell, and I appreciate y'all coming. And Steve, I'll turn it over to you now, this time. Out of the 34 customers that North Texas Municipal Water District has, they have 34 that entities that they sell water to. We did not have but 14, we were, 14 sold more water than we did in this last billing cycle. And that's all, we sold more water, RCH pumped more water than the city of Kaufman and the city of Farmersville. And that just shows you how much water that we, we supply. And I, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
My name is Steve Hatfield. I live at 1081 South Highway 205. And it's a pleasure to be here, to see y'all tonight, and, uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity to tell you what's going on at RCH. Jack has well laid out the plans that we had put together, and, as he said, if it had not been for the fact that we were all affected by this COVID-19 virus, we would be way further ahead on our plans than what we are today. But I'd like to take just a moment. The information I'm about to give you is not an excuse in any way. But it's a fact that a lot of people have not heard, and a fact that a lot of people do not understand. We, well, let me just give you a few figures here. RCH has 2,226 meters in use. From January 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2020, that six-month period, we pumped an amazing 142,400,000 gallons of water in that six-month period, which equates to approximately 791,000 gallons daily. That's over a six-month period from January to June 30th, going through what would be the coolest of our years, going into what would be the growing season for most of our yards and around here. But where it really changes, and if you will stop and think about when we started experiencing problems this year, from July 1st to August 30th, that two-month period, we pumped 125,100,000 gallons of water, which equates to 2,850,000 gallons of water per day. That's a jump from the first six months of the year pumping 791,000 gallons to those last two months pumping.
Let me make sure I'm understanding you right. So January 1st to June 30th was 142 million, and then 791,000 per day. And then July and August alone, those two months.
Those two months.
Was 125 million and two ma-, roughly, roughly $2 million, or $2 million, $2 million gallons a day, correct?
Yes, sir. 2,850,000, uh, well, 125,100,000, which equates to over 2 million gallons a day. That's approximately a 263% increase. And the issue becomes primarily irrigation water. And it's impossible, virtually, for us to anticipate that type of an increase. Not an excuse, but it's just an issue. You might say, well, why could not, why couldn't we have larger lines, more storage, and such as that? But there is also a requirement by TCEQ that our water be moving, not be static. And as Jack mentioned, it has to maintain a certain chlorine level, and that's hard to do if you're not using all that water. You see, if we had, if we were designed to accommodate 2 million gallons a day, probably for nine months of the year, we'd be well below that, facing almost a different issue, the issue of having to drain lines, flush lines, and such as that. So all of that being said, it's, it's not an excuse, it's an issue that we have to deal with, and we're trying to deal with that now. Appreciate your patience. Hope you can understand some of the issues that we have, and I hope you understand that we're not just sitting over there drinking coffee and eating pie. We are really working hard and diligently to meet the needs of our customers. Thank you.
Steve, a quick question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just say next summer, and again, I'm just thinking out loud, this may be a terrible idea, but what if we, as a city, had recommendations for people with the last name A through whatever, water on these days, and then K through Z water, and would that be beneficial, would that be helpful?
Yes, sir, but it's all based upon people willingly going along with that, and it's, 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 it's hard to enforce such as that.
Sure. I mean, yeah, it would be recommendations at this point.
And I think that, you know, in the future, we're going to have, Jack, I'll tell them about the engineer, having the engineer look at where we start declining in our water use. We, we are working with our engineering firm right now to try to figure out, anticipate, even with what we have coming online, the point at which we will start experiencing issues within the, the system. And at that point, we would probably go into a, a time where, uh, the first half of the alphabet would water two days, have two days, the last half would have two days to water, and then the rest of the time, it would be allowed to fill the system up and bring it back up to level. So, yes, sir, Mayor Pro Tim, we, we have thought about that, and, uh, definitely something we'd like to work closer with the city on, and, you know, in the future, let y'all know exactly what that maybe give you a little bit of, where you can anticipate when we're going into those times when we have a problem. Yes. Yeah, yeah. We, as I mentioned, we had, uh, 2,226 meters. That's nine, but 91 customers out of that figure used almost 20% of the water that we pumped last month. Some of those, and those, those are things that we need to deal more aggressively with, you know, we.
I'm assuming those are all residence, are those all residential?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pullen, Mr. Hatfield, might there be a, a way that the city could help you with, uh, getting the word out a little quicker? A website is great, but that's only if someone's sitting on the website. So when something like this happens again, we can disseminate information in a more efficient manner?
And we're working on a website right now, where we're gonna ask that our, that our customers would send us their, uh, email and their mobile number, whereby we will be able to text and email and better communicate with our customers what's happening. I mean, that would be for having to work on the line, and also when we have to go into our drought restriction, which.
Is there a way to, and I think the, the county ended up kinda helping us with this. Is there a way to get onto that emergency management text? Is there a way to, for us to just do McLennan Chisholm? Because I know there was a lot of confusion when that went out of people in the city of Rockwall and the city of Heath, who were freaking out about their water, and stuff like that.
Exactly. And I can't answer that, that's a reverse 911 system, I believe, that they have there, and I don't, I, as far as I know, that's run through the, the county emergency management department, and that goes to everyone within the county, or it used to. So we may, at some point in time, that may be able to happen.
Okay. Yes, sir. So when you, when you guys get the new website active, will you come? So when you, when you guys get the new website active, will you come back and just at least let us know that way we can share it on the city's website and that sort of thing?
It was very, very informative.
Thank you guys for being here this evening. Gary, did you have any things to share? Okay. Um, so if we don't have, do we have any other questions regarding RCH?
Can you say anything?
Okay. All right. So we will move on to item 7.2, presentation followed by discussion and consideration of Rockwall Central Appraisal District's resolution to renovate and expand the Ark, uh, Rockwall Central Appraisal District Appraisal Office property situated at 841 Justin Road, Rockwall, Texas. Uh, this was requested by Kevin Passens.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Council, for the opportunity to be here tonight. Come to you on behalf of the Rockwall Central Appraisal District, requesting your approval of the resolution that's before you. Uh, the resolution that was passed by our board of directors was for a building, in addition to our building, not to exceed 3.35 million dollars. And, um, the Central Appraisal District Office has been at 841 Justin Road since 1997. In that time, it served the, the citizens of the county and also the appraisal district staff well. And, um, in that time, the population of Rockwall County has increased from estimated 36,500 to January 1st, 2020 estimate, which comes from the North Central Texas Council of Governments of 106,340. Our parcel count has increased from an estimated 22,263 to 48,002. Uh, and that number was as of July 21st of 2020. And those numbers were based off January 1 parcel counts. Uh, when we rolled into our new year layer, which is a starting appraisal for 2021, um, that began around the beginning of August of this year, uh, our parcel count grew by an estimated another 2,000 parcels, just because of platid subdivisions that we received and started to split up the acreage. Most of the development that county right now is on the eastern side, your, your fate and, uh, and Roy City. Um, but the county just continues to grow at a, at a, at a rapid pace. Um, the 23 years that the building's been there, it's, it's served, served the appraisal district well. Currently, we have 21 employees. Um, we have five employees that are devoted to our collection department and the other 17 are devoted to, um, other 16, I'm sorry, devoted to our appraisal department. Um, we are a dual nature office. Not every appraisal district in the state collects, but we do collect. We, uh, we appraise by statutes. The tax code gives us our direction, um, of, of laws that we have to follow to appraise. We implement those laws. And then also the comptroller, uh, gives rules that we have to follow. Comptroller every year is, is in our office, um, measuring our appraisal standards and also our values. Uh, one thing we have to go through is a property value study. Uh, they take, uh, the values of our tax roll from the, the current year. They compare that to properties that have sold, and we have to be within a certain confidence interval to pass that test. And then also the methods and procedures review, the comptroller comes in to make sure we're following, uh, the tax code and the procedures that are set forth by comptroller's rules. Uh, so we are a dual nature office. We collect for all the entities in the county, uh, the muds and the PIDs and municipal utility districts and the public improvement districts. So, uh, it's a busy office. And, and once again, the duality of, of our office demands, uh, a larger space than most appraisal districts would. The property tax code authorizes the board of directors of the appraisal district, uh, with the approval of the taxing units to, um, to purchase, lease, to renovate a building as necessary to operate, um, the appraisal district. Um, the board of directors determine the most logical and physically responsible thing at this time to do would be to add on to our property. Um, a search has been done for commercial buildings that would, that would fit the needs of the district now and moving forward in the future. And, uh, there's, there's nothing out there at this time after, after doing that search that would fit our needs, um, and also fit into this, this same dollar amount. The planned addition is a 15,100 square foot two-story, uh, expanded parking lots, updates to the current building. Uh, the additional space and redesign will enlarge and enhance the comfort in public areas. Uh, the parking area will triple with one-way flow of traffic in it. Access to the building safer. I don't know if you've been to our building during protest season. Um, and we'll get into a, an actual layout of the facility here in just a minute. Um, there's very limited parking, and we have multiple fender benders a year, uh, in the parking lot. And I think we're very fortunate there hasn't been an issue with somebody actually being hurt up to this point. So i- in doing this, the parking space will increase, one way in, one way out, um, will enhance the safety. So I'll move into the presentation that we have here. On the screen is a rendition of the, um, elevation of the new facility. Um, what you see there in color is the new facility two-story. To the right of that is the current building. And so right now, our backs would be, uh, kind of towards the elementary school and TL Townsend. And so you're looking back at the building, you're looking back to the northwest right now. Um, so that's, that's the one rendering of the elevation. Of course, you know, the rendering of elevation could change as we get into the, to the actual, actual drawing of the prints. The next slide is going to show the survey of the property. So looking at this survey to the right in green is the current facility. It's about 6,100 feet, and as I said, it's been there for 23 years. Uh, the parking we have right now is to the right and left, or the north and south of this building. That's the only parking we have. The shaded parking to the east and west would be additional parking, um, that we would add. And then to the south of the current facility, uh, would be the proposed addition. Um, I, I know there's been some talk about us wanting to add a second floor to our building and a second floor costing this and that, and that's not the case. We're actually going to add an addition to the building, a new second, uh, two-story addition, uh, to the facility. And, and feel free to stop and ask any questions you have as we're going through this. Uh, the next slide, please. This shows the, uh, architectural rendering of the first floor. Um, in this facility, the new first floor would be 12 office spaces. There's three, uh, appraisal review board conference, there's three conference rooms that would house our appraisal review board hearings. In the top right-hand corner, there's another conference room for future growth of appraisal review board hearings. And then the second floor, you'll see there, I believe there's three more conference rooms up there. Um, the current facility we're in, um, we have one appraisal staff member, one appraiser is in a, um, it's, it's where our safe is housed. It was a closet, a storage room for our, our file cabinets and things of that nature. Uh, we moved all that in the hallway and utilized that office space. One of our appraisal members is in the collections area up front, kind of an open-air, um, department there. Uh, three of our staff members are housed in what I believe is the old Cameron Building, Old County-owned building, which is at 270, I'm sorry, 205 in Ridge Road behind the 711 there. So we leased three office spaces there. When, when this building is complete, six of those offices will be full immediately. Um, and it leaves us growth in the future on the first floor. So, uh, a lobby area when the property owners walk in, a reception area to take care of them as they come in, and then some restrooms there. The, uh, the next slide is the proposed second floor. Um, this second floor will remain vacant for now, except for it'll be heated and cooled so that we can move our, um, storage documents, documents that have been retained and stored in a climate-controlled storage to this facility, um, immediately, freeing up about $7,000 a year that we pay in climate-controlled storage. And adding to that number is, um, about $23,000 we pay for the leased facilities, the three offices that we lease. So $30,000 total, if this is approved and this building is built, um, there'll be savings there to the, to the entities of the county. Uh, it'll be removed from the budget once, once we get, are able to move into this building. Um, once again, there's, um, conference room upstairs, kind of a more open design for the second floor. Um, the envision here would be the appraisal staff would move there. There's a lot of, uh, contact and a lot of discussion through the appraisers as we go through the process every year. Um, you know, what's your opinion of this, your opinion of that? And, uh, so there's a lot of, a lot of open discussions. So the open-air, uh, open office space idea design, the second floor, also allows us to have more, um, staff in, in that, in that specific area. Uh, the next slide is going to show you just kind of the percent change of population in the, uh, in the, in the county and the city of McLennan-Chisholm specifically over the, the last few years. And once again, these numbers come from the North Central Texas Council of Governments. So 2010 population estimate of McLennan-Chisholm, they showed 1,373. 2020 estimate, they show 3,780, or, uh, 8.9% increase from 2019. Um, just the population of Rockwall County, if you project that out, comes to about 160,000 by 2031. Um, they estimate the, the build-out of Rockwall County at 250,000 to 300,000 population. Um, we try to look forward to the future in this facility. If the projections move forward as they have in the past, then, um, this facility will serve the county to build out and beyond. So if the resolutions are passed and this building is built, um, once it's paid for, there won't be anything but just maintenance and operation moving forward of the facility. Uh, the next slide is going to show, um, a parcel count projection. And once again, we take the past parcel counts and project that forward using 3.4%, 3.47% from 2020 on, um, would show the need for 17 appraisers. Right now, we have 11. So if the projections move forward in 2030, that first floor is full. And then we're going to look at moving forward to add, add, um, additional, uh, offices in the second floor, um, to facilitate the day-to-day operations of the appraisal district. The next slide just shows the allocation breakdown, um, to, uh, each entity. And it shows the, the cost of this building to the city of McLennan-Chisholm would be roughly worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario is run off financing the full 3.35 million. Um, the first number we got, interest number we got was 4.49, so we ran that. And it came to 696 or $700 a year, uh, is the, the impact financially to the city of McLennan-Chisholm. Uh, the next slide will show if, if, I believe the bullet point is in there, yes. Uh, the bullet point kind of shows the breakdown of the facility. It shows the, the two-story facility costing 2.8 million or $185 a foot. Uh, the first floor FF and E, 117,000. Uh, the remodel of the existing building, uh, we want to put a drive-through into the existing building where property owners can come through and drop off payments or drop off, uh, applications or exemption forms or whatever it might be, or pick up documents and, and not have to get out in inclement weather, or if they're just not able to get out of the automobile, just to better serve them. And then also, we have to retrofit the current facility with the fire suppression system. So 159,000 there, then architect and engineering fees. And the total cost of all these come to 3.35. Um, there's an estimated $912,000, uh, in, uh, reserve funds and money from this year's budget that will be, be put towards this building, which would reduce the estimated finance amount to roughly 2.5 million. I'll say that the, the number of 3.35 was the high estimate from a design and development package. We do not have a full set of blueprints yet because there's no point in moving forward and spending the money that it's going to take to get those, uh, prints drawn and engineered when we don't know if we're going to be able to build a building yet. Um, if we get the passing resolutions to do this, then we'll move forward with that. So, uh, the design and development package was an estimated 3.35 on the high side. Um, so 2.5 will finance. We do have a rate on the table now of 3.5 fixed for 20 years on this commercial building. Um, so it brings the payment down to 177. Uh, your allocation percentage brings your payment down to 478 dollars a year, um, allocated towards this building. Uh, once again, the resolution, resolution is for 3.35 million, and, uh, we're requesting your support in this matter. And, uh, with that, I will take any questions that you have.
How has the, uh, COVID impacted your ability to do your, uh, protests and things like that? How are you working that? How do you work it?
So we, we facilitate two ARB panels. If we don't run two ARB panels every year, it'll be impossible for us to certify our role to our entities by July 25th. So we have a small office, uh, up in the front of the building that we had used. Um, so when COVID hit and we knew there was an issue there with the pandemic, uh, began to look at how we were going to run two ARB hearings. So what we did was we put a half-wall in our lobby, and we converted our lobby into an ARB hearing room, uh, for social distancing purposes. Um, you would think with COVID that people would utilize phone hearings more than what they had in the past. Ironically, the numbers, 2018 was the first year for phone hearings. The 2017 legislature implemented that. We had 117 phone hearings the first year, and 2019, we had 138, and we only had 201 this year. Um, people like to come in face-to-face and, and protest the property value. And that's their right. That's their right. And I don't blame them. I think I would be, be the same way. So COVID did affect us. Um, it affected the operations. Our office doors were closed for about two weeks just because of some, uh, COVID scares within the building. Um, but as far as affecting the operations, we were still able to certify that role in a timely manner.
So there's, uh, is there any ability for your employees to work virtually?
That, that's, yes, there is. Um, a VPN connection, um, with the amount of data that we transfer back and forth and the sensitive nature of the data that we transfer back and forth. Um, there's confidential information when people fill out home set applications, their social security numbers, driver's license numbers. So, you know, if they're going to work from home, there's going to have to be secure VPN connections set up at their home. Is the Wi-Fi going to be able to do that? I mean, those are all questions that thankfully we didn't have to answer because we didn't have to, um, we didn't have to go virtual like that. Um, but yes, it would be possible. I do know with the off-site facility that there's so much data that is pulled when, when appraisal, uh, when an appraiser pulls up or calls up a property ID number, there's so much stuff that comes out of our appraisal software, um, that the VPN connection is very slow and it drops out, and they, they lose it sometimes and have to go back in and call IT and, and get things fixed. So, uh, there's challenges there. Will that, you know, could that be better in the future? I don't know. We're, we're working with an IT company. It's very highly recommended. And, uh, they're, they definitely have, have had their challenges this year with the VPN, so.
And you, uh, said you have, uh, file cabinets in the halls and-
We do.
And you rent a facility out and you rent another storage facility. Is that a state requirement to keep all that documentation part copy? Or is there a way to put that?
Good question. So when I was appointed in 2018, um, I saw the need for record retention digitally. So probably end of first quarter 2019, we did start scanning and retaining documents digitally. So all the stuff that has to be retained, we're, we're moving that forward and moving that over. Um, and as we move forward, we're also retaining that digitally. It's, it's caused, uh, an increase in our server, the cost of the servers and things of that nature, but, um, we have gone that direction in the last couple of years.
And one more question?
Yeah, bro.
Uh, and this is, uh, I'm just trying to understand this. You get your funding for the building, so 50% comes from the school district and then the various, various cities and the county and-
Correct.
The muds all pay into it.
Yes, ma'am.
So would it be feasible to say that a person that lives in the mud has to pay for that at the mud, at the city, at the county, and at the, um, school district level?
If they're paying taxes to all of those entities, and yes, they're contributing in those ways, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're funded by the entities, which in turn is funded by the citizens or the taxpayers. Um, the, the school gets the lion's share because they have the lion's share of the levy. The way the property code, uh, property tax code sets it up, to fund our budget, um, you fund it by a levy percentage. So our operations budget, uh, we take the entity's tax levy for the year, and we divide it back by the total levy, and that gives us that percentage. And because Rockwall ISD has a lion's share, then, um, they, they get the lion's share of, of, of the budget and everything else that we, that we have to do.
And this is all set by state law or?
It's all property tax code, yes, ma'am. The property tax code gives, I, I said this, I say this in meetings and I get laughed at, but we're simply implementers of the law. Um, the law says do this, and that's what we do. We do our best to follow the property tax code to a T. Um, and the reason it's like that is so it's fair and equitable for, you know, for our property owners. Um, so we, we do our best to, to follow the letter of the law.
But you don't, the, uh, difference, appraisal districts don't get funding from the state for-
No, ma'am. We are not state-funded. The way it's set up is completely funded by the entities of, of the county that they appraise in.
And when did you, uh, last look at available commercial properties?
Hmm, two weeks ago, maybe three at the most.
Kevin, can you comment? I know that you've already kind of been in front of some other entities.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I know that the, the school district last night did not approve this.
Correct.
Can you share with me why they didn't approve it?
Sure. They said, uh, they said timing and, uh, House Bill 3. So the legislature in 2019, they kind of restructured school funding. The state said, we're going to kick in more funds. Schools, you're going to get to reduce your rates, thus saving the taxpayers money. Um, the COVID effect, oil and gas in, in Texas, um, you know, the oil industry shut down, and we, you know, oil sold for a negative amount, gas was, you know, dropping there very rapidly during the COVID effect. Um, so they said, uh, they just don't know what the legislature is going to do with House Bill 3 in 2021. Nobody knows what's going to happen, you know, past, past what's happening right now. But, uh, their, their, their reason was timing and, um, House Bill 3, they just don't know what's going to happen with funding.
That's kind of my, that's my concern as well, is not so much the need. I think the need is fairly obvious. I think that, you know, the, the timing of it concerns me a little bit, but-
Sure. And, and, and on that, I mean, we, we tried two years ago, um, and, you know, different set of dynamics there, but, um, it was shut down again. I'll say this, that as we move forward, the need for more staff is there. Um, the need for more staff is going to cause the need for more office spaces. The need for more office spaces is going to cause the lease prices to go up. Um, and, and that's money that's never going to be recovered by the entities. Um, if for some reason there was a constitutional amendment that abolished appraisal districts, that property's sold and the entity gets all their money back. Um, you know, in the next 10 years, the need for the appraisal staff, if the county continues to grow, is not going to change. So we're just going to be adding offices, you know, there's six offices we are looking at adding over the next, um, 10 years. So those- So those lease spaces cost money, and so that's just going to continue to increase. It's not going to increase as much at one time as this is, but there's still going to be office space that's going to have to be rented to facilitate the district because there's going to be no way for the staff that we have now to appraise 60,000 parcels, 70,000 parcels in 10 years from now. So I mean, yes, it's not going to be a one, you know, a hit right now and moving forward, but it's still going to happen at some point that there's going to be additional costs to house the staff that we're going to need.
Other questions for Kevin? So at this point, I will, just to kind of make sure I'm following the letter of the law here, ask for a motion to approve the resolution to renovate and expand our CAD appraisal office property situated on 841 Justin Road, Rockwall, Texas. Do I hear a motion to approve that resolution? All those opposed to this resolution? They say aye. Oh, there's no motion? Oh, okay. So without anyone voting for? Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Yes, just respectfully, I would like to maybe have a conversation in the future of what would it take to see a resolution pass? It's a need that we have. And once again, I appreciate you guys, and we're honored to work for y'all in the capacity of the appraisal district of Rockwall County. Thank you for your time.
So item number 7.3, consider approval of local Davis Bacon wage rates for use on the upcoming fire station project. This item only generally was requested by Ryan Rossburg.
Good evening. Mayor Proten, council members and staff. Thank you all for having us tonight. As we've discussed, a big part of our, much like the gentleman that spoke before us, you know, following the laws and making sure that everything is in strict accordance with our understanding of the law. A big part of that is Texas government code that governs all of your public construction projects. So making sure that we're following all those government code requirements, and one of those, Section 2258 of the Texas government code suggests that the public entity should adopt prevailing wage rates to include on your construction projects. So with that in mind, what we're, the city has the option of doing two things. Either A, basically performing your own wage rate survey around the immediate area, which is an extremely costly endeavor, and it drags out a very long time, or you can use the locally adopted Davis Bacon wage rates that are already established, and somebody else has already done the work for you on that. That is what most entities will do. The only time we'll really see a divergence in that is usually when we're somewhere that's really oil-heavy, where the local wage rates are driven crazy high by welders or things like that that may not apply in a rural area. So with that in mind, we've discussed with Speedfab Crete, who you already have on board, they're in agreement with adopting the Davis Bacon wage rates and incorporating into their contract. And so with that, we would like to ask that the city council consider approval of adoption of those Davis Bacon wage rates. And just to give you a little background, the idea behind the Davis Bacon wage rates is really to protect the workers, to protect the folks working on your projects, and also to ensure that you're getting quality workmanship. This basically prevents somebody from hiring, you know, somebody for $3 an hour to come dig a trench. It ensures that you have quality workmanship and well-paid workers.
So do I hear a motion to approve the local Davis Bacon wage rates for use on the upcoming fire station project?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Ryan, will we have to renegotiate this in Jan?
No, ma'am.
And, but when I was reading, I didn't understand, what does fringes mean?
So I believe the fringes are the things that are incorporated in the wages, like healthcare and vacation and those kind of things that are incorporated into that wage rate.
Any other questions at all? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote is unanimous for, to approve the local Davis wage rate, Davis Bacon wage rate for use on the fire project, fire station project. Item 7.4, consider ranking of geotech materials testing firms and authorize city administrator to negotiate a contract with the top-ranked firm in accordance with approved fire station budget. And Ryan, this is one of your items as well.
Yes, sir. Okay, so also along the same lines of the Texas government code, as a public entity, you're required to have basically a third-party material testing firm which provides exactly that material testing of the components that are going into your building. Those things are like concrete cylinder tests to make sure the concrete meets the proper PSI, the proper mixes, you know, checking things like steel that's going up, making sure that the bolt pattern or the turn of the nut, the bolts are bolted incorrectly. Just very high-level material testing, prism, grouts, grout prisms for CMU, those sort of things, compaction testing of the soil to make sure that the soil is properly compacted, you know, before you start putting anything on top of it. So with that in mind, we're also in need of a geotech for the site across the road. What a geotech is, that's where they come in and take borings to determine what's under the ground, and those borings will help determine how the foundation is constructed on the building. So both of those items are a professional service under the Texas government code, and so through the Texas government code, you're required to procure those as a professional service, that being based on qualifications versus based on price. So with that in mind, the city did issue an RFQ for geotech and material testing services. We received those. I've got Sean Spires here with us tonight with AGCM, who assisted going through all of those responses to the RFQ. Sean, how many responses were there? There were seven responses. So you had really good response, all very good quality professional firms, and Sean has gone through and assisted in ranking those and is glad to answer any questions. But what we're asking tonight is that you approve the ranking as presented in your packet with Alpha being the number one. Should the negotiations fall through with the number one selected, most qualified, then negotiations will cease and we'll move on to the number two, highest ranked.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
For the number one rank, which is Alpha, under commitment and availability, out of a score of total of 20 that they could have received, they only received 15. Can you elaborate?
Sean? Yes. I believe that was based on location of office and how quickly they could dispatch to the site in need of emergency or something happened.
Yes, they were basically on our, on our scoring matrix, we had miles away from availability from the site, and zero to 15, 15 to 30, 35 to four, or 30 to five and up, and they were at 25 miles away. So that's why they received five. That was a lot of points scoring for that. Yes.
How important is geographic proximity to that, to what we need them to do?
It's not as important as some of the resources that they're able to provide, but it's just availability, like if we have an early concrete pour, if they need to send somebody out to do a quick inspection. But at our, what we usually request is a 48-hour notice to them for any inspections or testing they need to do, so they have plenty of time to make sure that they have the availability and their resources.
Any questions? So I will ask for a motion to approve the ranking as presented for the geotech materials and testing firms as listed.
And may I also add, and approve the city manager to move forward with negotiating and executing that contract in accordance with the pre-approved budget.
And approval of the city administrator to move forward with negotiations on that contract. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion at all? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous for approval for the, to approve the ranking as presented and to authorize the city administrator to negotiate the contract with the top-ranked firm as listed. Ryan, item 7.5 is you as well, fire station, design and build, update and related matters.
Yes, sir. So just wanted to kind of have this as a standing item in case you had any questions about where we were in the design process. Did want to, you know, at the last meeting, we brought you where we were at the time with the floor plan as it was conceptual at the time in Speedfab's concrete. Since then, we've had a meeting with Speedfab to talk about some things that kind of we wanted to see tweaked a little bit. So I believe you have a floor plan, maybe there in your packet. Do y'all have a floor plan? And I can pull it up here on the, or I can send it to you if you want to pull it up on the screen.
I can pull it up. I just don't know how well it's going to show, but I can pull it up.
No problem. We've got some really cool, really great tweaks that, and Ron Hamm is here with Speedfab Crete, and he's glad to answer any specific questions about the design. Yes, there's one bed per dorm room. Just one, one per dorm room. And just to, I'll just add on to that, that's a kind of a, that's kind of a mission for us. We think that that's super important, and I know Speedfab Crete and the chief would agree, but when folks come back from a distressing call, they need, they need somewhere to go by themselves, where they're not surrounded by everybody, just to go and decompress. So it's really important that they have their own small space that they can go and, you know, digest and do what they need to do. Okay. So the biggest changes that you'll see on this floor plan from what you saw last time around, and hats off, again, if you have any questions for Ron, glad to answer them, but hats off to your team for coming up with some very creative solutions to some of the questions we had. But if you remember on the last floor plan, the men's showers are basically what we call a gang restroom. So because we wanted to focus on making sure that the station could be better suited for the future in terms of housing males and females, that gang restroom concept was eliminated in favor of individual restrooms and showers. So, and that's, that comes at no increase to the city. Speedfab just did it. They just took care of it. So much, much better layout, and you gained a shower. So you actually have one extra shower beyond what you had last time. So that's pretty, that's pretty amazing, and the same footprint, footprint hasn't grown at all. So that's the biggest change, I believe, out of this floor plan. Some other minor tweaks over to the bunker gear room, the storage rooms, where again, for future growth, we wanted to make sure that that bunker gear storage was a little bit, a little bit larger to accommodate growth. We moved around some things like the ice machine to make sure that the ice was not out in the bay where it could get contaminated by particulate from the trucks. So again, in line with protecting the first responders and making sure that they're healthy, and we're watching out for them.
So Ryan, just as far as for the sake of meeting minutes and documentation and that sort of thing, so at this point, I'm seeing eight beds, correct?
Future.
Eight possible.
tentative, tentative.
Correct.
Correct. Eventually, you could grow into eight. So again, with future growth in mind, there's eight possible spots.
And then four separate bathrooms slash showers, correct?
Let's see, one, two, three. You've got three that are situated on the main corridor, and then you've got one that's over by the storm shelter area, which is required by code.
Right. I mean, any other, any other specifics that would be pertinent to share at this point?
Those are really the biggest changes, and as I mentioned last time, this will continue to evolve and tweak as we go forward, and, you know, we may find little things here and there, so it'll continue to change, but we'll continue to give you updates so that you know kind of what's happening, and nobody's caught off guard when we get to the end and start putting a shovel in the ground.
When do you expect us to have the final design?
So, so next, next meeting, I was actually going to bring y'all an updated schedule and budget, kind of to show you where we are on that. I wanted to wait till we get the geotech done because I think we're concerned about what they're going to find underground. And so once we get the geotech in, I think we can, we can hone in on that schedule a little bit and give you a better update at the next meeting.
So is this still a work in progress, if that's any person's thoughts?
Yes. And I will tell you, you did approve a kind of a straw man schedule early on. The schedule that they're proposing currently far beats that straw man schedule, far beats it. So again, it's looking very good on paper, but I want to be cautious and get that geotech and make sure that before we present that that we're That's right, yes, ma'am. But everything's going very well. Great, you've got a great team, so we're very happy. Correct, just a public restroom, yes, ma'am. That's for public use, no shower. And you also have a decontamination shower out in the bay, but no restroom, just a shower. So we've got some busy pieces.
Other questions at this point? So Ryan, if we don't have any other questions, I think we're good with item 7.5.
Yep. So again, no action needed on this tonight.
Correct.
This is just an update. We'll have these standing over a couple of weeks just to bring you up to speed. We really won't have any action beyond tonight for quite a while until we get the final design ready to present to you. That would probably be the next action item related to construction.
Thank you, Ryan. So item 7, number six, discussion in action regarding consideration of an interlocal agreement for the fire protection services between Rockwall County and the City of McLennan-Chisholm. And Chief Simmons, I'll let you take the floor on this one. So do we have a?
We have to make a motion.
Right. We have a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for fire protection services between Rockwall County and the City of McLennan-Chisholm as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Rockwall County and the City of McLennan-Chisholm for fire protection services.
Do I have a second? Okay. So any discussion at all?
Yeah, I got some discussion. So chief, when you got this agreement, was there any talks about increasing subsidy from 77.5 to go higher for our, for more call volume that we're receiving?
Other questions? Other questions? Okay. So all those in favor of approving the interlocal agreement for fire protection services between Rockwall County and the City of McLennan-Chisholm? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those not, not in favor, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Item number seven-seven. We will open up a, open up for a public hearing to receive comments regarding the setting of the tax rate to zero point one-five per one hundred dollar valuation on all taxable property for the fiscal year starting October 1, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021. So we'll open it for comments at 7:40 PM.
Valerie Bodart, 402 Cattle Baron Drive. I saw a facility for lawn storage on the floor plan for the, for the new fire department, and I'd like to suggest taking the funds earmarked on the budget for a code enforcement officer and a truck and moving that money to a property maintenance fund. Chief Simmons is qualified as a code enforcement officer, and he has been filling that need. I see no need at this time to expand our staffing when these funds can be used to invest in the equipment necessary for the upkeep of our growing outdoor city property. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments at this time? Mr. Steinhagen?
Good evening. Thank you again. I, I think that's a very wise thing that Mrs. Bodart is proposing. The number of, how many code enforcement calls does the City of McLennan-Chisholm get? And yet, in this budget, we have a code enforcement officer, another staff individual, and, with a vehicle. And remember, I thought it was interesting that the code enforcement officer was supposed to mow the grass too, which, which you guys wisely said, let's take that out. Chief Simmons has, has said that he plans for the fire department to mow the grass at, at City Hall when the fire station is built. There's no reason they can't do that now if they had the equipment. So it makes sense, it makes no sense to have a code enforcement officer. There, especially with the number of calls that we have. When I was mayor, we had a code enforcement issue where an individual had mul, too many horses on their property, and we won that case in, in, in a, in court. And that same property owner is still violating the, the code and is, again, the city is, 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 is dealing with that issue. It's a code enforcement issue, it's the same one, but you're not getting a, a bunch of code enforcement issues. You've basically created a solution where there is no problem. If you like big government, if you like bureaucracy, man, this is the way to go, no question. But if you like limited government, if you think to use efficiency is the, is the top priority, well then, this code enforcement position is, is ridiculous. Spoke with Chief Simmons, and he even said that he could, he could have men on the fire department, one per shift, get trained as code enforcement officers as well, if there's that kind of need, which again, I argue that there's not. There are so many other better ways to, to skin that cat than to create this new position. So you have the opportunity right now to, 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 to move that money over, buy some good lawn mowing equipment that the fired, firemen can, can mow the, the grass here, save the citizens money, not have the people, us taxpayers, work for you. Thank you very much.
So mayor, just to catch you up, we're in the midst of a public hearing to take comments on the tax rate. So that is still open at this point?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year starting on October 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021.
My second.
I, I personally don't think it's a great idea to use firemen to, to cut grass. I'd rather have them work on their professional development. And that's, I still think the code enforcement officer, based on conversations we've had with Chief Simmons and with members of the community that have code issues that we seem to deal with on a weekly basis, I, I believe the part-time code enforcement officer is a good use of our taxpayer dollars.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the ordinance setting the tax rate of point one-five-zero-zero-zero-zero for one hundred dollar valuation on all taxable property for FY, for the fiscal year starting on October 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get councilmember Kipit to...
Can we read, rewrite that?
If you don't mind, please. There's, there's real specific language at the code priors.
I'm sorry, I realized that when I was saying what I was saying. I move that the property tax rate for seven point nine?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point one-five-zero-zero-zero-zero for one hundred dollar valuation, which is effectively a two point nine increase, two point nine percent increase in the tax rate.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we need to do a roll call vote on that as well?
Please.
Okay. Ms. Trudy? Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl? Ms. Kipit? Show that unanimous. All right, seven point one zero, discussion in action considering an ordinance ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget. I'll entertain a motion on that. I believe that one needs to be read the same way. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the FY 2020 to FY 2021 budget.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to the roll call vote. Ms. Trudy? Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Ms. Kipit?
Aye.
Show that one unanimous. Moving on to seven point one-one, discussion in action regarding consideration of a resolution declaring the city has performed the required annual review of the investment policy and is not recommending any changes at this time. I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Move on to seven twelve.
Mayor, I'm actually going to request that we pull this item if you don't mind.
Seven twelve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I had recommended it, that we altered the language just a little bit, but I really need a little bit more time to work on it. I was talking to the accountant today, and considering the fire station funds and the fact that we didn't budget for all of those funds that TechDoc provided us, I was thinking that you all would probably want to roll those into fire capital. But since we don't know the timing of the fire station completion, I think maybe it's a bit premature, and I think maybe we just need a little bit more time to kind of work on some of the language of that. And there's really no urgency. So I'm just going to request that we pull it at this time.
Okay. You're the one that requested it, so we'll pull that one at this time. Seven one-three, discussion in action regarding authorizing the city administrator to open an additional checking account at Alliance Bank for transactions related to fire station cap and related expenses. I'll entertain a motion on that?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to open an additional checking account at Alliance Bank for transactions related to the fire station capital and related expenses.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Show that unanimous. Moving on to seven fourteen, discussion in action providing for authorized signatures to the city's financial accounts with Alliance Bank, Tech Pool, Logic, and Wilmington Trust. I'll entertain a motion on that?
Mayor, I'd like a motion to approve the authorized signatures to the city's financial accounts with Alliance Bank, Tech Pool, Logic, and Wilmington Trust.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion?
Mayor, just for clarification, this just, we did strike former councilmember Bloom as a signatory, and we added City Secretary Green, and the others stayed the same.
All right. Any discussion amongst council? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Seven fifteen, discussion in action, or excuse me, discussion regarding outdoor weather warning sirens, including possible locations, costs, and related matters. Chief Simmons, would you like to take this one since you put it on?
I know many months ago, there was, there was some conversation with the councilmembers and some citizens in regards to outdoor warning sirens. We started gathering some information, even though my profile is, 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 so, 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 so. So I started looking into it a little bit, and had some section back there, looking at companies and managers who installed the outdoor warning sirens throughout the next decade. He was actually looking at it, but we were just going down the, heading it, or just going down the time, using some of the, and we were having a good conversation. I said, you know, let's, let's look at, what do we think for the city to go in and put some outdoor warning sirens? And how much cover do we give with one, one tower? And how much cover do we give with two towers? So in the packet, you'll see a map there that shows two towers. Tower one would be what I call the city hall or power station run property. And the tower two would be the senior, the, 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 the tower two. And on that map, looking at the city limits, without actually still, now, we would cover any of those two sirens, we would cover ADA properties in the city. Please understand that these are for, these aren't designed for individuals that are in home, you know, all the time, or in life, designed for outdoor groups on their person. But you can see clearly this map there, that you had, it starts out with a, the, under desk for the norm, and you can see now that circle kind of rose out to seventy to eighty, that's pretty much in terms of the rest of the city. Two towers, one tower, we would install just one tower, the state, there, there's about thirty-four towers, and that's like possibly higher than two. And the reason why is the software, the installer, the equipment that comes with it to at least have one tower, you know, that. American Signor provides the software, and I, I do not know this thing, and the system very well, that conversation we did most recently with City of York City, and I'm going to have to talk to City of York City and find out how well the system works. And the software, the, 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 the system can be activated individually, that you have a computer access, you have iPhone access, you have iPad, something, you have a tablet, the system can be activated. Also be activated from a manual push button, that we would, if the city was assigned to this, we would have local, dispatcher, or probably watcher, and, and, and station. So you could have numerous people on it, and the mayor would have access to, at least now that access to, and you know, you know, council would have access to, don't recommend it, but if you did, you could have numerous individuals that have an account to be able to go in there and make sure that in a situation, a phone call, two, 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 two. Two sirens to cover the city right now, would run the city approximately, around, approximately seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand dollars, and have two complete auto map cover sirens installed, and two other. And the, the thought behind this is kind of, I know lots of citizens have concerns with the, the city around this region, and have a start set. So if we were able to, to get to the system, as the city develops and grows throughout, then we could look at where our next siren could be, and the work of those developers, you know, and then partner with the city to be able to install. Part of this initial plan was, was having some brief conversation, very brief, just kind of to, to plant the seed a little bit, get some of the, they were looking at this, and we presented this to council, and council decided, we would come back to that conversation and see that you were the developer, and partner with the city to be able to install the sirens. If, so, if council chooses to look more into this, we really, perhaps want to, we could, we could, we could be more likely to fly, to cover, for the next council meeting, council want to, 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 to speak through, know this system, that's up to me, if, 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 if.
Basically seeing if there's council interest in pursuing further discussions with, with the implementation of this project.
Prices were a whole lot less than I expected, and some numbers that I have received from other cities from many years past.
I don't, I don't remember that off the top of my head.
Chief, what? Absolutely. This, this is just agreeing before council, so we have a start, to, to give direction, to say continue to move forward and look into it. And again, you know, it's been many months, but, you know, we've seen a few phone calls from citizens, probably after we were the last person, probably, while we're looking at this. And so it started the, the process.
Well, I know, even before I came in office, there was, I think you had a public safety commission or some sort, and that was something that they had looked at, because I had a citizen come to me during one of my office hours with a, you know, with a plan, talking about that it was something that they were looking, that, 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 his neighborhood, Kentwood, was, was interested in, in.
This discussion started back in...
It's been going on for about three years.
It's been something that's talked about, and said, now we're, we feel like, we feel like it was time that we were actually, we want to get a conversation about it and see if it's something that we can, we can, we can.
Oh, I do have it. I have it.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Chief, did they, did any of the documentation you get from them, did it go into any detail about what the cost of the annual preventative maintenance would be for these systems?
You know, and that's, we did go into the, the, the cost would be tremendous cost. So, so in order to maintain this system, lots of money, and that would be on the city, so we, 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 gonna write in, at the next meeting, to kind of go a little bit deeper, do any maintenance of, please, hours and the system, you know, specifically.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the long-term cost of the system as well.
All right, if there's no further discussion, then we'll... Before we move on to seven sixteen, it's been requested to take a, a five-minute break, so, it is seven fifty-nine, we're gonna break for about five minutes.
I wonder why? Oh, you, I thought you were well. How you doing?
I'm tired, but I'm doing good. What you got? Yes, ma'am? What you got? Hey, hold on. Go ahead, go ahead. It's nothing important. Gotcha. Oh, yes, yeah, no, that's perfect. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am? Do you need these? You need that for any reason? Okay. Huh? Huh? What you got? Nice, that's a little bit, that's a little bit, you haven't heard that before? Oh, yeah, that's, that's an older big Eddie right there. Our yell leader, sir. We have yell leader, sir.
Does that read myself, sir?
Somewhat. Okay, no, I'm, I just saw that. We just didn't watch this.
Oh, I'm shivering. Hey, you're sitting around seriously, for a second?
I've been looking at that for a while.
No, no, you didn't really sit, you didn't really get along, I'm just saying. I, you know, I didn't really get along, I just, I'm feeling for a second, because I don't think that I just, I'm shivering. I was just passing, saying, uh... She's too shy.
Yeah, I, I had that right here, so I kinda was like, so, what about this? What about that? Yeah. I figured that would help our cause with it.
Yeah, you just, sometimes you're draining, huh? And so, it's just...
It's just, I'm just, I just need to get past budget, I'll be better after today. We got it all figured some, I've been looking at it all day.
Appreciate my opinion.
And this policy, whatever fund you show them, do we just define it?
Well, I think we did, and then, uh...
Oh, okay, okay.
But, I mean, like, in the budget itself, even, you know, we use the word reserves, and I think, I think we assume it is, I think it's not, in other places, we, uh, uh, fund balance policy, we use, or... This, you know, more consistent, when you use in terms of...
That's fair. Or, or, oh, I think that you, I think a lot of times, we, 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 we're generally, is that, is really? Or we get, we're used to, are you? Because we know what we're talking about. Just saying, like, how does that relate to, 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 to? But we just, uh, used to what we're saying, and we get, we're, 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 and this, following, and so, yeah.
Well, we find it. We're talking about budget transparency, but we're, the county, they're trying to get to a place where they can apply for, uh, simple transparency, for the animals, and all that stuff, so we want to make sure that the terms are using the budget, and all of our financial policies are consistent with all the, the...
Yes, we'll have all the reasons.
I'm not quick. Sorry. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Eight oh seven, this meeting will be back in session. Um, the next item is seven one six, that's a by councilmember Dahl, regarding activities with personal development, and, and consideration, uh, request from the committee of direction from Kansas City, what are the main priorities and activities? Mr. Dahl?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, so, we had our first meeting on the fourteenth, um, got a good group of people in here, and, uh, one of the things that, um, they expressed, I'll go into a little detail with, um, they nominated, uh, Mr. Jim Herron to chair the committee, and they nominated Mr. Paul Day as vice chair for the committee. Um, the committee, once we, when we passed the resolution to start the committee, we tasked that resolution with several items, several big-ticket items, uh, one of them being to help out with the, um, um, the, um, the commercial development standards, as well as, we also asked them to help out, they're gonna be developing a economic development plan, but also to help work on our comprehensive plan. Um, they got some pretty big items to chew off, and one of the things that they're looking for from us was a direction to go, um, to get their feet wet. Um, they just want some guidance on where they can go as far as the first big items that they should actually start to tackle first, so that's what they asked me to bring today. Um, their next meeting, they're gonna have Mr. Koke there to help them out with some questions. Um, they did wanna get some infra, they wanna get some infra, infrastructure information, um, and also they wanted to get some water information from RCH. I think what RCH delivered us today is gonna give them some good value as far as, um, what any plausible needs would be for any, uh, commercial development in the city. Um, but mainly what they're looking for is their guide, they're looking for guidance on what the big-ticket item should be that they should tackle first, before they start breaking up into the subgroups that we slated them for.
So, what do you think would be the most important thing, the economic development plan, or, I mean?
Well, the economic development plan is gonna encompass a lot of items, so by them tackling some of the other items, it would actually fold into that.
Feed into that.
Um, since we've already slated to, um, try to tackle our comprehensive plan, I think that their time would be best suited towards, um, sort of driving towards that goal first, maybe. Um, we do need, we do desperately need, um, our zoning changed, or our future development of zoning to be, to be looked at, since the majority of our commercial, commercial development zoning that we currently have is gonna be completely consumed by two oh five and its expansion. So, that is more a time, time-sensitive issue, um, when it comes to economic development, but I think the comprehensive plan and getting started with that would probably be the, one of the better uses of time, but I'm just the messenger, so, um, what you guys would like me to bring back to them is what I'm looking for today.
Gosh, it seems like you're closest to it, I, I would really lean on you for that, I think your, uh, your plan is good.
Mr. Dahl, was there, were there any discussions as far as methods of recruiting businesses to come to McClanisham? Is that been, is that a topic of discussion at all?
So, the, uh, Economic Development Committee is gonna be broken up into two subgroups. Um, they're, and I don't mean the subgroups, like, they're gonna be working apart from each other, they're all gonna be working in the same room, but their focus is gonna be driven in two different directions. Uh, one of the groups is gonna focus specifically on zoning changes and how that could be beneficial for the city of McClanisham as far as, um, not only z, uh, zoning correctly for the economic development, but also retaining our, uh, pretty much the, the heart and field of McClanisham is by keeping the open, the, the open space look and as far as trying to reorganize that in such a way that we can have economic development, but it doesn't look like we're clouding everything out. Um, the other group is gonna be focused on, uh, reaching out to, um, commercial entities and seeing who would be a good fit for our community and trying to bring them in, or trying to bring them to the table, so, but until they know which direct, which big item they wanna tackle first, will really depend on, um, which persons on that, that committee decide which direction to go as far as going into the subgroups. Our next meeting... Put this up real quick. Our next meeting is gonna be October nineteenth, uh, here at this location at six thirty P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl, for heading that up.
So, you guys have a direction you want me to ask the committee to think?
I mean, to me, I think that, from, from my perspective, I think, like you, like you mentioned, I think that the, the zoning sort of needs to be a big priority, obviously, with, with our, to coordinate with our plan, so I think to me, that's kind of our hottest, hottest item that we need to, really need to address.
I'll answer.
What I wanna make sure also with this is because this is an economic development committee, um, we need to be careful on, they don't have the authority to start directing city standards for anything other than needing support.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's in the, uh, it's in our resolution documents, and anything that this group actually produces, um, to goes, that goes to council, um, obviously the recommendations, so, and, uh, so any, any zoning change recommendations, we go through P and Z first to get vetted, and then it would actually end up, it actually would come to us second, so.
Okay. Other than that, I think you get a good drawing point.
Thanks, lady.
My pleasure. Nothing else, we'll move on to eight point one. Building official report for August twenty twenty. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to eight point two, Sheriff Office Report for twenty, August of twenty twenty. Any questions?
No.
All right, moving on to eight three, Budget Report for August of twenty twenty. Any questions? All right, move on to eight four, McClanisham Fire Rescue Report for August twenty twenty. Anything on that? If not, we'll move on to eight point five, CWD Report for August of twenty twenty. Any questions on that?
Looks like the Extreme Green event was pretty successful.
How did that?
I wasn't able to attend, but, um, Jason said it went well.
I think they, I saw in there that there were roughly a hundred and forty cars, and I think we had less than a hundred last year, so...
So, it's growing.
He, he said it went well, it sounded like people were, uh, calling in anticipation this year, they were asking ahead of time when it was gonna be, uh, and we did have some calls here at City Hall asking ahead of time. Uh, we did, um, and made sure we sent out a postcard, uh, to each household this year, just, just kind of, just to give them information about when it was gonna be and, and what we could, uh, bring for that particular event, so, I think it'll grow a little bit, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Once a year, uh-huh.
All right, eight six, Animal Control Report, how are we doing on that?
Uh, picking up, picking up, we do have some activity, so I think as people are, uh, understanding what services are provided, and get a little bit more files, you can...
There's a lot of, there's social media chatter about it, you know, lost, lost pups or whatever, and I, I think people, uh, once they call, I think they're surprised to know that all American dogs will bring their dog back to them, uh, they don't have to necessarily dwell the way out to file a point to pick it up.
Correct. All right, moving on to nine, Councilmember Request for Future Additive Items. All right, moving on to ten, Councilmember Reports and Announcements. Ms. Triddy? Mr. Lottles?
Mayor, just one comment. Um, last week I attended, uh, Rockwell County Open Space Committee. Uh, it's my first meeting, uh, to attend. Um, I think it's definitely right up the alley of our, our rural-minded community, I think it's gonna be a good, uh, it's definitely something that I'm, um, excited to be part of. Um, I think it's... There's a little bit of a misnomer in that, it, an important aspect of it is water control and flood control and stormwater control, and, and that's, uh, definitely a topic that's new and dear to my heart, so, um, in the coming months, I'll probably will come back to the, to the council with, um, some suggestions, comments, and that sort of thing, but again, I just wanna give you guys a heads up that, uh, had, had a good meeting last week.
Good. Mr. Dahl?
Um, we still have a couple of, um, we still have a couple of seats available, um, the temp seats for the Economic Development Committee, or is that right, showing? Or the alternate seats? Yeah. Um, we would like to get those filled for that way, if, um, if, uh, for whatever reason, some of the, um, committee members can't be there, they still have the ability for, um, a forum for voting purposes, so if anybody out there has an interest in it, it'd be greatly appreciated if you applied.
Hey, Shelley, does, Mr. Arias, does he need to, if he wanted to serve on economic development, does he need to do a new application? Right. Um, the only thing that I have, and it was something that, it slipped my mind and somebody called me today and reminded me of it, is Saturday, and I don't have the time, you may have to look on social media, um, but there is a dedication of the bridge in Rockwall, the sixty-six bridge, to rename it the Heroes Bridge this Saturday morning. Um, so if anybody's available and they want to go out there, they're expecting a, you know, a lot of support and then it's going to be followed up. There's also, uh, I may have the wording wrong, a truck train or a caravan happening on Saturday as well. Other than that, we're, we're starting into the holiday season. October's here next week and Halloween's coming, which means kids will probably be out and before you know it, Thanksgiving and Christmas are here, as well as the election and Veterans Day and, other than that, I don't have anything, anything else. Um, if that's it, it is now eight twenty one, since we've gone through everything on the agenda. Meeting adjourned.